Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to start the meeting very shortly. There's still our registering people. The school committee will open up their meeting. I will open the town meeting, but I will suspend to allow more people to get in, to our registered voters to get here. We're filling up here. There is additional room in the cafeteria for registered voters as well as non-residents or observers. They will be in the cafeteria. No observers, non-registered voters will be allowed in this room here. If you do leave the auditorium for any reason, please grab one of these. They should be, the checkers in front should be able to give you one so we know you are a voter coming back in to the auditorium for whatever reason. At some point, I'm going to try to get that side door open so that we can try to get some ventilation in here. We have to wait till we get everybody checked in. Ms. Reggio, I'll turn this over to you. Jane? Jane, do you want to do this now or do you want to wait?
Do we have everybody because we have to do roll call? Yes. Can I just bang the table?
Okay, we will call the special time meeting, the district-wide special time meeting to order. I will suspend, but I will defer it to the school committee and to its chair, Jane Reggio.
I know, I know. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the school committee meeting of August 8th, 2000. I know you can't hear me. I know you can't. It's just for the recording.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's really difficult to hear, I know, but the fans, so we've got to try to get everybody's attention, please, please.
Okay, is this better?
That's good.
So, welcome ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the August 8th, 2018 meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee. At this time, I'll do introduction of school committee members. I am Jane Reggio from Millville.
Erin Vonaco from Millville. Tara Larkin, Millville. Karen Vernon, Millville. Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Bethany Dunton, Blackstone.
And I'm Jason DeFalco, the superintendent.
At this point, we will suspend our school committee meeting so that we can open the district-wide town meeting. I will defer to our moderator, Mr. Dan Doyle.
How are we doing with registrations out there? Do we know?
I think they're running.
Everyone's in? How many is?
Just a couple on the NSA.
All right. Then we will commence with the district-wide special town meeting. We're making history here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, for both the town of Millville. It's the first time, and I welcome all of you here. It's a very serious matter that we have to address. It is only one warrant article, and we will go through it as quickly as we can. But before we commence with this, we do need to start by standing and pledging, pledge allegiance to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Okay, first order of business, Ms. Reggio.
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the sections of the town bylaws of both Millville and Blackstone pertaining to the non-resident participation in order to allow the following non-residents to participate in discussion matters at this district-wide special town meeting. Dr. Jason DeFalco, Superintendent of Schools. Oh, please apologize. Lori Zahorski, the Town Accountant of Blackstone. Mr. Justin Cole, the Town Accountant from Millville. And Mrs. Jennifer Callahan.
Motion has been made to waive those sections of the town bylaws of both Millville and Blackstone pertaining to non-resident participation in order to allow the following non-residents to participate in discussion matters at this district-wide special town meeting. Has there been a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Moving on then. We have the one warrant article, ladies and gentlemen, that we're here tonight. The warrant article has to do with the entire school budget, not just a portion of the budget. This is, they're recertifying the budget, and it requires that both towns participate in the recertifying and the approval of the entire budget. So that's what is before you tonight. And we will ask, Dr. DeFalco will give an explanation and a detailed description of that. I will commence, I will proceed with reading the article. To see if the voters will present, will vote to approve the recertified school budget of $22,623,707 to assess the amount of $8,562,533 to the town of Blackstone, which includes $6,317,741 for minimum contribution, $1,347,481 in exclusionary costs, and $897,311 in supplemental investments, and to assess the amount of $2,909,338 to the town of Millville, which includes $2,074,258 in minimum contribution, $507,276 in exclusionary costs, and $337,804 in supplemental investments. Ms. Reggio.
Mr. Moderator, I so move to see if the voters present will vote to approve the recertified school budget of $22,623,707 to assess the amount of $8,562,533 to the town of Blackstone, which includes $6,317,741 for minimum contribution, $1,347,481 in exclusionary costs, and $897,311 in supplemental investments, and to assess the amount of $2,919,338 to the town of Millville, which includes $2,074,258 in minimum contribution, $507,276 in exclusionary costs, and $337,804 in supplemental investments.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. I'm going to dispense with rereading that again. I think everybody knows exactly what we're talking about. I'll open it for discussion, please.
Mr. Moderator, I defer my comments to the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Jason, Dr. Jason DeFalco.
Dr. DeFalco.
First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for being here on this cool, comfortable August evening. No, but truly, we really appreciate everyone being here. And quite frankly, from a selfish perspective, it's been a great way to meet a lot of, a lot of people in our community tonight. But so it was a pleasure meeting many of you one-on-one, and I look forward to meeting those that I have not had an opportunity to meet with before this evening. I also want to extend a thank you to many of you in this room, town leaders, our police chiefs, fire chiefs, and many others who have really helped and assisted in my transition into Blackstone Millville Regional. It started back in the spring and has really accelerated since my, since my first day July 1st. So I want to thank everybody for your warm welcome and for all of your support so far. So we are here this evening to speak about, I think, two things that probably are some of the most passionate items that many of us will have an opportunity to speak about, and that is, of course, finances and our children. And I can't think of two more items that draw up as much energy and excitement and passion than those two particular items. And this evening, our conversation will probably have those two things tangled together. And before we get into that, I just really want to underscore four of our core values in our district that we really very much embrace and want you to embrace this evening as well as we proceed with our conversation around our budget. And those core values are community, civility, respect, and achievement. And we are really underscoring the four, the first three of those four values tonight as we proceed in our conversation around a topic that we know is very important to discuss, which is our school, our school budget. The most important job of a school superintendent, of course, other than safety, is being the chief child advocate for those children in the community which he or she is serving. And that is something that I take to heart, not only as an educator and an educational leader, but as a parent of a 12 and a nine-year-old. I know how important it is to make sure that we are advocating for the needs of our children. And I understand budget restrictions across both communities, but I also understand that my job as superintendent of schools is to make sure that I am putting forward the budget that truly meets the needs of the children in this community. And that's what I am here to do this evening. It is my priority as superintendent to make sure that we are giving children the opportunity to become happy, healthy, and proficient in all academic areas. And to do that, it's going to take fiscal resources. And so with that, I want to talk a little bit about the budget and how this number essentially is put together. So you know before you this evening on the warrant is the approval, we certainly hope, of a $22.6 million budget. You have the specifics in the handout that we gave you when you entered this evening. But I really want to be clear about where that number comes from. Over 50% of the $22.6 million is coming from, coming from the state and state aid. So about $11.5 million is coming from the state of Massachusetts and in aid to us, which is just over 50%. $8.5 million is, would be assessed from the town of Blackstone, and $2.9 million will be assessed to the town of Millville, hopefully when the $2.6, $22.6 million budget moves forward. In the spring, the school committee and administration had to go through a very difficult budget cycle where we needed to reduce services, reduce teachers through non-renewals and layoffs by $1.5 million. Those are direct services to our 1,800, approximately 1,800 children that we had to cut. And I want to be clear, that number, that budget number is the $22.6 million. That includes that $139,000 in that, the $100,000 from Blackstone and the $39,000 from Millville. So with that number included, we got to the $22.6 million, and we had to already cut direct services to children by $1.5 million. I also know that there has been quite a few questions around, well, what will be restored or put back in the budget should the $22.6 million go forward. I want to remind everybody, the $22.6 million is what led to the cuts of $1.5 million. So our next steps this, after this evening, hopefully we will have a certified budget. Hopefully you will pass the $22.6 million. Then the school committee and administration will come back to the table, look to see how all the numbers will be finalized for FY '19, and then from there, determine what priorities can be, can be put back on the table after that $1.5 million of cuts that we have already made. So I share that because there is no new money. There is no extra money. The $22.6 includes the $1.5 million of cuts that we've already made. And so if you are interested in getting into some of the details around what would be put back into the budget, if anything at all, I would encourage all of you to attend our school committee meeting on August 16th. But please note, without a certified budget, which we hope to have this evening, we can't even get to that standpoint. Right now, we are operating our district on a 1/12 budget from last year's approved budget, which means the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has restricted us and not allowed us to spend any more than 1/12 of last year's budget each month until this is finalized. And what that means in real dollars and real cents is about $1.9 million in expenditures. With capital expenses, with the, with the operational expenses, and with payroll, as you can imagine, that goes very, very fast with a staff of about 300-plus and trying to provide services to about 1,800 children. So I'm sharing with everybody now the urgency behind getting this budget passed at the $22.6 million and letting the school committee do the work they need to do to determine what, if anything, can be restored. It would encourage you to, to join us in that conversation at our next school committee meeting so that we can make BMR the district of choice in Blackstone Valley. Because right now, without a budget, it's hard to be building on the strengths we have. So with that, I will turn it back to the moderator.
Thank you, Dr. DeFalco.
Thank you.
I'll now open for any further discussion, anyone who wishes to discuss it. Please stand, please come up to the microphone, either to the back or the front. Please state your name and what town you come from, please.
My name is Jim Benson. I live in Millville.
Mr. Benson, could you please speak up because it's kind of...
Okay, my name is Jim Benson. I live in Millville. I don't have any children, but I want to stay from the outset. I'm in favor of...
Please speak up, sir.
I'm in favor of this recommendation. However, I'd like to know what we're getting for our money. I heard the superintendent talk a lot about what the money costs were going to be and what they were looking for, but I'm kind of curious as a non-child, not having any children, what is our ranking as a percentile? What are we getting back for our investment? How do we rank against the rest of the state in terms of how well we prepare our children to face the needs of society, to get good jobs, and to contribute to society? And I don't hear any information. I would like the superintendent to share that so that as we look into investing more of our tax dollars into this, that we know that we're getting something of value instead of just continuing with whatever, I don't even know what it is right now, but I don't know what our ranking is. Are we in the top third? Are we in the bottom quartile? Are we in the middle? Are we just, you know, what are we getting for our money?
Mr. Benson, I'm going to have to cut you off at this point, Mr. Benson, because those questions that you're asking, you're not, it's not really pertinent to the vote and the motion tonight. Those are issues that really should be addressed directly to the school committee and their school committee meetings unless there's, unless the chair or the superintendent wishes to briefly elaborate on it. I'm going to defer to that.
So that's a great question and one that I appreciate very much because what you have just essentially outlined is let's connect the fiscal resources to accountability and outcomes, which is exactly what the school committee and the current administration is about. So just a quick headline. At the last time we were ranked statewide, BMR was ranked 115 out of 290 school districts. And we are a level-two school district under the state accountability system. Level one is the strongest, level two, level three being the bottom 20%, level four and five being the bottom 10%, and of course, level five being receivership. So we are currently at level two, although the accountability system is shifting, but we are about 115 out of 290 districts.
Very good. Moving on. Any other questions? Mr. Watson.
Mr. Watson, please state your name and where you live. Jim Watson, I am from Blackstone.
Mr. Watson, you got to speak up, sir. Sorry.
Okay, this mic, I guess you got to get very, very close to it in order to anybody hear anything. I am from Blackstone. I am a member of the Blackstone Finance Committee. I chair the Capital Outlay Committee that just approved some of the renovations to the Kennedy School. What I would like to do is try and simplify this for some of the people that are here. And I am completely amazed at the number of people that actually turned out because I fear that most of the people here do not understand in any sense what is actually on the table here tonight. Number one, Blackstone has fully funded the entire amount toward the regional school. Every single penny has been funded. Millville has short-funded the amount by the grand total of $39,000. Okay? So what you are looking at is if you approve the resolution that's put forward by the school committee and you all came out to vote on, Millville will have to raise $39,000 more and send it to the school. Blackstone will have to raise not a single penny. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
I hope, I hope that clarifies for everybody here what is actually on the table. It's not the $20 million. You cannot by law increase the budget after it already has been voted. So the top number is fixed. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Any further questions? Could you either go to the back or the front, whichever you'd like to.
It sounds like a very small amount of money to you in Millville. Well, it's also a small amount of money to the school committee. You're talking about less than 1/10th...
Can't hear you, sir.
You're talking about less than 1/10th of 1% of this budget. All right? Now, according to the town of Millville accountant, the school district has assessed the town of Millville an increase of 4.58% over the last few years. Okay? That's in an age of Proposition 2.5, where the school committee is supposed, we're supposed to live within that 2.5% budget, and that's all we can increase our budget by. And yet, we still get bills from the, from the school department and asking us for additional money. And what have we done? Over the last several years, we have actually bankrupted our stabilization fund. We've actually given up our entire reserve fund in order to be able to fund this budget. We have said no twice to this $38,000 to $39,000. It's not much money to this school department. It's a lot of money to us. What do we have to give up next? Police department? The fire department? Is a ton of Blackstone going to come to our town when we have an emergency because we don't have the money to fund those departments? I don't think so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No one else? Yes.
One thing I want to point out is that if you look at 2016 data, which is the latest data from the Department of Education, current average spending per student in Blackstone Millville is $13,330. When we send our students to BVT, we send out $18,989. When we send our students to Norfolk Aggie, we send $21,685. When we send our students to Tri-County, we send $19,303. If we do not invest in our district school system, more students are going to leave, thus costing us more.
All right. Order, order, please.
It's also going to cost us in resale value of our homes. Nobody is going to buy a home in a town that is not investing in their school system. My daughter is a junior. I have one who graduated. I'm only in the school system for two more years, but I will continue to fund our students and our children, and I ask you to do the same.
Anyone else? Do we have, do we have anyone from the cafeteria? Do we know if there's any, do we have any registered voters over there?
Just walk up to the microphone, Tammy.
All right. Yes, go ahead. Please state your name and where you're from.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone. I just want to address the point of the $39,000 plus the Blackstone $100,000. $139,000 to a district that has one of the lowest per pupil expenditures in Massachusetts is a big deal. $139,000 is a big deal. It can be two teachers, it can be technology, it can be a fire panel, it can be lots of things. So please don't discount the fact that it seems like a small number in a big budget. It is very important that we do not have to make any additional cuts after this vote tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Deborah Swain from Blackstone. I moved to Blackstone in 1987. We built a home here because of the school district. In the name of full disclosure, I was also an educator in this community from 1991 through 2005. I'm now a principal in Mendenupton. My kids have gone through the system, graduated, gone on to college, graduate school. My son is an attorney. My daughter is an assistant principal at North Attleboro High School. I was the part, a part of Blackstone Millville Regional School District when we were building our district, when we were growing, and it was an exciting time to be here. And it brought people to our district, and it made me proud to be an educator. I became an educator at 36 years old, going back from my degree at that point after volunteering in my son's kindergarten class. My kids are grown, they're married, they're gone, but I'm here to advocate for education. We can't give up on our kids. We have to invest. They're our future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I am Amanda Gilmaine, and I'm from Millville. What I would like to ask you guys, everybody, I know we all have our opinions, is look around this room, the people that you don't know. When you vote tonight, they're the ones you're voting for. It's not yourself. It's voting to advocate for their children and allow all of our community to grow and fund our kids' education, just as everybody else has done. Everybody that got to go to school when you were in teaching, and all I've heard from that, from my husband who grew up here, is how great the school system was. And all I want to do is afford that same opportunity for my kids. So please don't just think about how it affects yourself. It's everybody in this room. We are all here for a reason, and our kids deserve an education. Thank you.
Hermano Petocchi, 154 Lincoln Street in Blackstone, Massachusetts.
Sir, we can't hear you. Could you please state your name and where you're from?
Blackstone, Massachusetts. I hate to put a...
Your name, I'm sorry, sir. We did not hear your name.
Hermano Petocchi. I said it twice already.
Very good. Proceed.
Okay, I hate to put a little damper on this kumbaya thing that's going on, but my taxes have been going up $500 a year for the last five years that I've been living here. And I'm going to say something, and I respect you guys from, from Millville as anybody can respect you, but boy, you have to start taking responsibility for your school part.
You were out of order, sir. I'd like to keep your, keep your comments to the budget, to the school, to the warrant article that's presented.
Okay. I didn't notice, you didn't say anything when they were... I didn't notice, you didn't say anything when they were going off the tangent.
Proceed, sir.
But anyway, I personally, I have no objection to the budget that was passed. I object, however, on having to come back here and vote for another budget because Millville decided that they didn't want to pay their share. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hool.
Evening, everybody. Tom Hool, Millville. In particular to that gentleman, I would just like to point out that there are no more funds in Millville, and that will definitely impact our public safety. We're trying not to affect our public safety right now with our difficulties, and I understand that, you know, Blackstone, this isn't all your burden, but as a selectman, I feel I need to share a little information with you. Millville's deficit right now, we're trying to bridge, is very big, and that $39,000 may mean the difference between one of our two firefighters or one of our two full-time police officers. With that said, we all know our children are our most precious assets. My children have been through this system too, but to get blood from a stone is going to be very difficult. I'm not sure where this money's going to come from. Believe me, if we had it, we'd be all over giving it to you. I'd also like to point out that it was the Blackstone Finance Committee who brought this extra burden on to all of us. It wasn't their select board. They decided to add an extra $100,000 to Blackstone's charge and another $39,000 to Millville. So, at a town meeting, granted, it went through, hey, good for you, I'm glad, I wish we had it, but where those funds are going to come from, I'm not sure as a selectman, and that's just going to add that much more money that Millville's going to cut and scrape for. It does, it affects everybody, and believe me, I feel bad about it because I want nothing but the best for our children, and I'm sure everyone in this building does. It's a difficult time right now for Millville. I ask you to consider that when you vote.
Thank you, Mr. Hool. Anyone else? If not, we're going to move the question here. One more?
Jackie Lima from Millville. Just to follow up on selectman Hool's comments, I just want to make sure that everybody in the room realizes, this year, Millville is facing a tight financial year. Our appropriated budget this year has $0 for our senior center, it is currently closed. It has $0 appropriated for our town library, it is currently operating on donation funds.
We have to stick to the warrant article, please, before the-
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure people in the room are aware of Millville's financial situation this year, the deficit that we're currently in, and the fact that we have no way to appropriate this $39,000.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move the question. I think we'll proceed with moving the question at this point. Move the question. Now, one of the things that we need to understand is we have to vote by secret ballot. And we have a ballot and a stand down in the front. You'll have to come to the center aisles and then come down, and you'll be handed a yes/no ticket. You vote yes, your vote will go into the ballot box, and you discard the other side into the bin. And then make your way around to the center aisles. Everybody would convene to the center and then down, and then we'll take the top rows and the galleries and bring those down as well. Okay? So please be prepared for that. I'll need some counters down here. Do we have anybody down here that can help? We need somebody down here to hand out those tickets. I'm sorry? We have them down there, they're there.
Folks, we're going to try to do this in an orderly fashion.
We need the counters, please don't stand at the Norman ladies, please wait.
If you can just have a seat until your section gets called, otherwise, we'll just have a-
Please try to wait, we try to do this as orderly as possible. I need the counters to come down here to the front. We'll try to do this as orderly as possible, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr., can you-
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, when you come down to vote, what you'll be voting, if you vote yes, you're voting for the warrant article as presented. If you are voting no, if you don't agree with it, you would vote no, and your no would go into the ballot box, the other one would be discarded. Okay? So a yes vote is that you agree with the warrant article as presented. Now, we have, I just want to do the count because we have 211 voters, registered voters from the Town of Millville, 355 from Blackstone that are here tonight. And our counters in the front. All right, please, ladies and gentlemen, just the people that are handing out the tickets in front, everyone else, please stand aside. Okay, front rows first, please, please stand and come forward. Let's go. One on each side of the row. One over there, one on the other side, please. Wait for them to come to you, please, counters, wait for them to come to you. Do not pass them, I'll wait for them to come to you, please. No, I only want them when they come to the ballot box, please. I don't want them passed out sooner. I only need two people holding it up, one for each side of the row. Ladies and gentlemen, you should be coming out to the center aisles and then going out the wings. Please come out the center aisles, ladies and gentlemen, please stop. Come out the center aisles and down, come down to vote and then pass a wing on the wings. Come down the center aisles to vote and go out the wings, please. I don't want that, I want everybody coming down the center aisle. Please come out the center aisle and down to the front, leave it that way, I want it that way. And then pass out to the wings, please. I'd appreciate if you please take your seat again after you've voted so that we can make room for those coming down. There you go. Tom, Tom. Tommy Levitt, would you put that in the bin for me, please? Okay. Put it in your pocket. down? Please move on, take your seat, thank you. Please move on, take your seat, please. Ladies and gentlemen, if you've already voted, please do not leave. Ladies and gentlemen, again, I'll say, if you've voted, please do not leave. This isn't over yet, and your vote still may be needed, so please do not go.
Like, right after this, then, school committee continues a meeting to decide where the funds are going.
So, it's based on what the-
Yes.
We're staying to do that. Do they expect everyone to stay?
No.
So, right now, they're going to count them out, and if it's close or if it's tied, then after three votes. Tonight?
Yes.
That's why people stay?
That's why they're asking people to stay, yes.
So, how long is that going to take?
Oh, so, I mean, there's a time limit.
I just can't believe they-
That's why we need the money.
Oh, seriously, I'm all for it. See, it's going into kindergarten, but we're in Millville. We've been looking at this, you know, White Island. So, these are going to be for our, you know, the 90-year-olds.
So, for purpose of this, no special education. No, no, the kindergarten classes are at 20.
I went to, I never went to.
Where?
29.
For kindergarten?
Yeah.
Sarah.
I went to, I went to-
So, that, that's-
Because in Blackstone, they're trying to-
Well, we need the budget to be able to make those decisions.
I am Little Jack Keefe, a brother of Little Danny Keefe. Oh, okay, yep, only songs for Bobby. Yes. He used to babysit me all the time. Oh, yeah. My brother was the Hellion. I was just the one who Bobby would lift my head up to the fan, so. Oh, I don't even remember it.
Before you-
I know, I know, yes.
So, before you make a decision on whether for our school for kindergarten, so, until we see what the outcome is for this meeting and for school committee meeting.
That's-
That's- I know. So, before you make a decision on the primary school for kindergarten, so, you tell me, see what the outcome is for this meeting and for school committee meeting. He has the lowest tax rate in the world.
Well, the local county of Florida, the ones in Milton Town. Back then, the state wasn't mandating, because they weren't funding it. They need to stop it.
Well, no, he's talking about mandating, like, transportation.
When they tell us to do something, they gotta pay for it. They don't. Or if they just paid what they, if they paid what they said they would, they wouldn't be needing it. Because the state doesn't pay anymore.
But that's also, like, in town, in streets, in towns, right? And if you look at Nobbo, they don't have one street. So, when you look, you look at Blackstone, our tax rate, Blackstone's like nineteen, Nobbo's just like sixteen. And he's, yes, yes. And I know that Nobbo had a five-year plan where they were trying to get it up to twenty. Go down.
You can't kick people out of where they live. You can't kick people out of where they live. How tensionary, now, though.
So, the thing of it is, is, like, when we're saying, we're, the schools essentially are tied directly to...
Gotta make money somehow, then.
So, we have a force system, or like, moving to her, so, I can see how upset you are that your child, whether he's a class of twenty-nine or he's twenty-eight, and that is going to drive you out of town, or just going to drive other people out of town, and it's going to cause Nobbo not to be able to send type people to come town to town. And it's the different things. Yes, you're probably right. It's not going to cause it to happen. So, great. So, we don't really have to understand that people, you know, with... They live, also, their grandparents. We don't, they don't have... So, we have one child, we have one child, we can't go into kindergarten. Before you make any change, like... It's gonna be bad.
Right, right.
Just, just, so, I have, I have five sons. As a mom of five sons, you have come through the district, before you go to private... Blackstone, I live in Blackstone. So, before you, you know, we school choice a son out, and he's back. So, before you jump ships, just see what happens. Give it, like, give it one more week and just see how the numbers shuffle. Because if you plan on stopping, you say Nobbo...
Oh, hi. How are you? Nice to meet you. That's tomorrow.
I know, I know, I know, I know, we leave there.
Yeah, Friday, Wednesday, I'm late for eleven, eleven, Friday, Wednesday. I did, sorry. That's about all the brick is.
You know that the market is so hard right now. I'm sure you could probably sell your...
It might have been the district.
It's the district, but I'm just...
The only person who can be better is me. Hi, how are you?
The superintendent is fabulous. Oh, yes, yes. New principal. I know, Hector Payton.
We most, I think, with the town left side, it's like our school is possibly, our kids destined to be on social media and all this. The high school, very good. The kids feel, like, their self-image, you know, when we can split our media, our channels, right, times, I can't, you know, social media.
We are definitely in a unique situation right now. We are, we're in a situation. But I feel like this is gonna pass, 'cause I'm standing out front, and the Blackstone line was down the corridor, and...
Did we, did you happen to record the numbers when you read them? Great. Because, no, because here's the thing. How do people... And that's it. And, and the tendency before was the, "I'm your seventh superintendent in eleven years, and I, I don't intend to say..." And we haven't been funded, and we haven't been blah, blah, blah. He said, "Look, we need to support the kids, we need to support the education, we need the money to do it." Boom. So...
Perfect kids.
I don't know if anybody heard the first part, 'cause I don't think this microphone picked up, but it got louder as we kept talking.
Yes. People are leaving right now.
Hey, Miss Ruben, how are you?
Oh, yeah. I could say if it's in, like, two or three or five votes, or seven, ten votes, then, yeah, then they would be not... Yes, yes, it is. So, we have to close our meeting, because we are still a little meeting. So, our meeting doesn't close until we... We're gonna be moving our location, once this is over, but our meeting is still going on.
Yep, that's your job.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we have any voters in the cafeteria, please come over to vote. Could we have our communicators? Thank you.
So, we're gonna mo, Tammy, we're gonna motion to adjourn the district-wide meeting and continue with the school committee. After the vote. Yep.
Has everyone here, has everyone voted from the cafeteria yet?
There you go. All right, I shouldn't say that. Shouldn't have said that out loud.
Everyone has voted?
Because we wanna see how smart people are.
We all set?
It's all about education.
The voting is done. It's closed. Now...
You're a, you're a...
We're all set. Now...
That's okay. I grew up in Vermont.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, I ask you to, please wait, don't leave yet, because we're not done yet. It isn't over till it's over here. The vote will be tallied first, and all the yeses and nos will be broken down, and then, count the yeses, count the nos. That'll take a few minutes here, while we get through that. Will we find out if we have an accurate count of everyone that was registered here? Madam's clerk, is it possible we could check that, to see if there's any additional people that have registered to vote?
Oh, I'll have to say hello. Oh, my God. Oh, he'll know my brother. That's not good. Wow. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, that's a beautiful school now. How old is he now? Yes. That's up to them. That's up to them. Vote. Where are the cards? So, they can start, they can start counting, and you guys can help them pile, or maybe do, like, piles of twenty, or something like that? So, I was long gone, but he know my brother. I won't tell you my baby name, then. You can look it up, huh? Okay, yeah, I will, I will, I'll look for him. Okay. Yeah, that's cool. Oh, my God. He'd so know my family. Oh, my God. He'd probably been to my house.
Two nineteen. Okay, thank you, hon.
Good content, makes my heart of thorns, sorry, I don't know, superintendent.